Call the March 3, 2025 Crestille City Council meeting to order at 7:00 PM. I would ask that everyone please rise for the pledge allegiance to the flag and please remain standing after the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Unfortunately, one of our longtime civil service commissioners passed away on February 25th. Mr. Nick Weiss was 79 years old. Nick was a police officer for over 40 years. He worked 26 years for the city of Joliet as a police officer, retired as a lieutenant. He then went on to be chief of Lincolnwood, Midlothian, River Forest, and Elwood. He did interim positions as police chief in the city of Gilbert and the Oakton Community College. Nick Weiss lived in Crestille, Carolin Lakes, for several years after he retired. Unfortunately, as he was having more health problems, they had to move into Willow Falls into the independent living section. He served on our civil service board for eight years. He was dedicated, loyal, and committed to that position on the civil service commission. He leaves behind a wife and two sons. Certainly want to thank Nick Weiss for his sacrifices that he made for the city of Crestille, being on that board for many years. And we certainly want to offer our condolences to the Weiss family on their loss. And I would ask for a moment of silence in memory and honor of Nick Weiss. Thank you. Roll call, please, Chris.
Ray Solomon.
Here.
Glenn Conklin.
Present.
Scott Dyke.
Here.
Jennifer Methan.
Here.
Darrell Jefferson.
Here.
Claudia Gazal.
Here.
Tina Oberlin.
Present.
Mark Sapity.
Here.
Nate Albert.
Here.
And Joe Kubal. Thank you.
Okay, I did get a text from Joe Kubal. He is unable to be here this evening. Moving on to the first order of business is the approval of the minutes from the city council meeting held on February 18, 2025, motion would be in order.
Second.
Motion by Alderwoman Gazal, second by Alderman Albert for the approval of the February 18, 2024 minutes. Questions or comments? Roll call.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
Jennifer Methan.
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Mark Sapity.
Yes.
And Nate Albert.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Okay, moving on to our city attorney, Mike Steph. Good evening, Mike.
Good evening, Mayor and council. I do not have any agenda items, but happy to address any questions you might have.
Any questions of city attorney? Thanks, Mike. Moving on to our city administrator, Tony Graff. Good evening, Tony.
The on my memo that, too loud, start off with a report. Actually, this is from Patrick, Community Development Director. He gives a little bit of background on four projects. The fire district training facility, it is scheduled for the public hearing on March 13th at the planning commission, 7:00 PM. There will be a report ready for, to be distributed probably by, I think, Thursday, right? Patrick, Friday?
Okay.
Andy Storage, they're doing a re-submitting, reference to their terms and conditions, asking for asphalt material to be used instead of all concrete. And that's going in front of the planning commission on March 27. The old city hall property, they're having a little bit of a challenge with the new prototype of the building in regards to the topography and having the design fit within the parameters of the lot. So we're anticipating to have some type of new concept and land plan. We'll meet with them in about a week and we'll keep everybody notified. We're going to have an update reference there, the buyers for the old city hall. Community development staff sent out a list of new and closed businesses last week. There is one new business that's closed since then. They just said that at this point in time, they notified Patrick that called the economic headwinds was just too much to overcome. And that was the Joliet Patterns, multimedia printing company. Nothing new to report right now on the city center facility. We are trying to get these contractors to give us some prices. We're having some challenges with that, so keep you updated. The BL Duke Fire Incident, we finally finished the report in regards to all the expenses and cost in reference to that fire assisting with the Lockport Fire Protection District. And right now, we're looking at a reimbursement request for $432,982.16. We plan on going to the company and give them an update on the report. And if they have any questions in regards to the costs, we hope that they'll meet with us and we'll be able to go over that. I did find out from the fire department that they submitted their reimbursement, and they're still going through some more cost analysis. And at this point, they have not received any confirmation of reimbursement or recovery of any dollars right now from the company itself. Job announcements, the building inspectors, we got the two part-time, they're going through the backgrounds. I believe the start date is going to be in about two weeks. One of them might be a little sooner. And the training will be the rest of the month with Don Seaman and also the other inspector, Terry is here and is going to work for a couple more weeks to help with the training. The MGT with their government consulting recruitment services, got an update today, got about 30 candidates that have applied. They say that's a little better than last time at this time, it's a couple of weeks advertising. What he's requested, Ryan Cotton, is he would like to have a special meeting on April 8, which is a Tuesday. He will give to all the councils what's called his electronic book, which is all the candidates and the backgrounds and everything that they've done, and also classifying the candidates. You'll get that book about a week before the meeting. So has everybody looked, looks okay for April 8? Ryan Cotton can be here for a special meeting to go over the candidates. I'll send an email out. Everybody seems to be okay with the April 8, and we'll look to schedule a meeting at that point. On the agenda tonight, we've got the police vehicles, the equipment, the DCO grant for $250,000 to order the vehicles. Water meter replacement, still ongoing, making small efforts. We've still got some more to go. We are looking at the water tap fee to add for what we call a manual read. There'll be an extra fee for that, so if they don't comply with getting the new water meters in, smart meters, a manual fee will be charged to the resident. And we believe that manual fee, right now, we're looking at $75 that we're going to add to the bill that we have to physically go out and get the read. Places for eating tax, met again with Klein Gurkey. He's got some collection letters that he's going to be sending out to everyone, everyone that hasn't paid. We're going to start documenting, a little more aggressive request for collection. We're still going to keep going forward with the administrative hearings and look at going into some type of legal action. We have not heard from that one business, my waffle, I have no proof to say it's public. I've left messages, correspondence, and still have not received any response or any payments in regards to that. So deadline's coming up in about 14 more days, and then Mr. Steph and I and Glenn will take some legal action, but we'll talk to the council about that. Well, sanitary sewer treatment project, everything is moving forward on that. We do have one problem that's causing us some extra time, man-hours at least. The one clarifier, on the old one, we're still having problems processing the sludge in a timely manner, and then they have our landscaping company that takes the sludge and spreads it. The farmers still do not have, we still don't have enough farms to be able to spread the sludge. Hopefully with this new weather break and with warmer weather, we'll get some more farms that'll be willing to take the sludge. So we're putting a temporary holding area right by the clarifier, and we think that'll work with the weather going to turn into 60s. I know I'm not the greatest weatherman alive, but hopefully when it turns 60s, we're going to have some more farms available that we're going to be able to spread the sludge. DPW, we added another item here in regards to training. Julius Hansen has been working with our insurance company, and as you can tell with his report, we now have training being done through the insurance company at no cost, all the way from, we got the lead public candidate risk advisor with applying insurance services. This person is certified, will be doing off-site training, economics, and lifting, and will be sent in two groups for that. And then we're going to be working on trench and excavation training at no cost, and then training which was set up for certified flagging training on, see Patrick's, they march 17. The only cost that we do have will be the, bottom loan, safety company will be charging us $1,300 to perform that safety flagging certification for all our public works.
Will that be held here?
What?
That last training, will it be held here?
No, I think that's, that's one that's going to be off-site.
And how many people are going to it?
All the street department that does the flagging. And if he's got a couple more, if he's able to send more, he will. It depends on the demand of what we need for people to work that day. So we have to maybe pick two days to set in front of flagging training. But the goal is to get everybody certified. And then we're, Civic Plus is our website host. They do offer redesign and refresh in our website. And we started with a team meeting with staff. We're going to expand that to more of the staff to get involved with looking at different designs. It's good, it takes about a four-month project, they told us, to look at redesigns of our website. As we start walking through it, we'll start sending out different types of layouts and asking for your guys' feedback in regards to it. Most of it's going to be what they call that dropdown type of website design, but there is others out there that we're going to take a look at and we'll send to the council for your input, feedback. And probably, at the end of the day, we'll probably have a work session where we could maybe have the final two or three designs and see if we're going in the right direction before we go too far. Is there anything else? I'm here to answer any questions.
Any questions of city administrator?
Tony, did you put that in a report? I didn't get a report from.
Pardon me?
I said, did you put that in a report? I didn't get an email receipt.
Yeah, it was in the packet.
It's from Karen. From Karen.
From Karen.
Not him, correctly.
It didn't come from me.
Okay, it didn't come with the, all right, I got you.
Okay, thanks, Tony.
I have, Tony, I have a question for you.
Okay.
Oh, most likely it's a comment from Willow Falls residents. As you know, I understand you were sick and I called you, and I know you texted me back. Can we make sure that when the residents, they call, not to say to them they're going to be on the bottom of the list when they ask something? Throughout my whole career as politician, I have talked to many public work director intrums or full-time or part-time or et cetera. Nobody ever said to us, even including to me, he said, you know, we're too busy on the bottom of the list. It's not what he says, how you say it.
Correct.
But, but pretty much a statement from, from the resident here. We spoke with the director Hansen about all the garbage along the road, and there was signs so much to do. We are on the bottom of the work of the list, and that's the, they want to know. You know, I understand they're busy, and when I called him, he said that they have a huge list, and he's like, why, you want to see? I'm like, well, at this point, probably, yeah, I want to see it. You know, it just, again, it's not what he says, how you say it. You can always say, we'll take care of it, you know, you don't have to give a deadline. You can do it the same day, the next day, a couple days later. But to tell the resident and myself, you know, and then we find out there's five employees that were untrained and four supposedly they were doing duly marks, you know. So it's not like a busy season where we were doing snowplows, or there was no snow, there's no grass cutting, and there were no water main breaks, you know?
Yes.
And it's something that we have to, and I talked to Patrick about it when we had the meeting the other day, it's how our city looks. There's debris everywhere, everywhere. And this is the time that we need to put the staff to go out and clean the city. You know, this is the vision of our city. This is when, when people drive to our city, all they see is garbage.
I agree with you.
Okay, thank you.
Personally, I think our interim public works guy need to be here to answer that. I'm not going to talk to him through you. I want to talk to him because it was very disrespectful. Like Claudia, I got plenty of calls, and if you can't be respectful to the council people or the residents that pay your salary, you need to get out of here, plain and simple. So when can we get him in here?
Anybody else?
I need an answer, Mr. Mayor. Nobody else yet. I need an answer. That was very disrespectful, what that man did to those people.
He's not here tonight.
Well, he's got a phone. He need to get in here. We pay his salary. He's not off work.
Hundred and twenty-five thousand more.
And I'll reflect that to him. He's, he works for me. I'll reflect that to him, Darrell. It's definitely was not the appropriate way of relaying the message to the citizen.
You always got to remember that we are the business, you know, to the residents. And we have to act professionally, no matter what, to the residents.
Well, you're not only a real business, but we're a business that they support with tax dollars. They pay for this business.
Okay, thanks, Tony. Public Works Department, there's nothing on the agenda. Julius is not here this evening, so we'll move on to our city engineer, Ron Wedeman. Good evening, Ron.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't have anything on the agenda tonight, but I can take any questions of council.
Any updates on the signs, lighting?
No, the last, I have to follow up with that. Before, I was on vacation earlier, early February, that's when it got really cold. So they said they hadn't worked on it, but I hadn't had time to check back with them since I came back. But I will, I will call them tomorrow and update you, send you a text.
Okay, awesome. And are we going to see in this budget, anything about the light on McGilvray?
No, not this budget. Right now, we're finishing up, we're starting the design and finishing it up this year. Probably be next year will be the first, or the first time we can look at construction costs of getting into the budget.
I'm sorry, can you tell me why?
Why?
No, you said we're looking at design.
I'm sorry, we're looking at different designs because it's an SRA route. We're going back and forth with the county of what design vehicles to use for the radiuses on McGilvray and at Ryan in order to facilitate traffic. Because it's an SRA route, they require that SB, I mean, I'm sorry, WB65, which is full-size trucks, have to be designed. When we do that, it causes some major utility issues. We don't actually have trucks going down there because it's mostly residential, but we do have that commercial strip there in front. So we've gone back to the county to ask them if they would be willing to use a smaller design vehicle so that we then can finally get the geometry approved by the county and then finish up the design, which is anticipated towards the end of this summer. We could look at, or maybe look at bidding at the end of the year, once we start getting some costs, but that's kind of the schedule at right now.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question, Ron.
Yes.
Is there any kind of an update on the crosswalk project?
Yeah, Tony and I met with the school about a month ago. We gave, we responded to all the questions that they had. We actually came to a point where there was some discussion based on the monies that they get for busing and how that works. We've asked them to go back and question it because it's tying to some other locations and kind of hamstringing our hand a little bit. So that's what they're working on right now to see what they potentially can do where they don't lose their funding. And we're supposed to meet back again, I think, April, I think, is the next time we're supposed to meet back. Does that sound right, Tony?
Yeah, they definitely want to talk to us further.
Yeah. So it was real good, it was very, it was a good and very productive meeting, but there's still some things, some roadblocks that we have to get through, and that's what we're kind of working on at this point.
Okay, is there, is it possible that going forward, any subsequent meetings or discussions regarding this, that council is updated through administrative report or your report?
Yes, we could do that, definitely. And the other, one thing we did learn is we need to address, there is a flooding issue in that area with the homes behind it, and with that new trail system at one end, but it's also at the entrance. So Ron told them that in regards to the floodplain, if we're going to do any type of work, we probably need to address that and maybe put some structures in in the future, but we're going to have to look at that. It isn't just in regards to the driveway only. Behind it, there's a, one of the residents that works there told us, oh, it's squishy all back there. And that's the way it's probably supposed to be. It's supposed to hold a little bit of water, but if we're going to try to connect the trail system for the kids to come back and forth, we're going to have to address that in the future, too.
I'm a little confused because the crosswalk.
There, there's two things going on. I can elaborate a little bit.
Yeah, go ahead.
One, they, they're having some issues in their parking lot with flooding of water that's coming off of Caton Farm Road. That's one item that would, you know, we talked about, there's some, they'd like to maybe get some additional structures or something there to help with that so it doesn't flood out. There's two parking spots that it floods out. The second part, what Tony's talking about, that is behind the school and the bike path that the city helped facilitate to be built with the park district and the school. There's a low area there that goes through a wetland. It was designed to let water flow over the top of it, and that's what it does. Water flows over the top of it, so every time it rains, there's two to three inches of water that goes across that path. Obviously, with residents using that or children using that, it could be issues in the winter time. So we said that we can work with them and maybe come up with a solution. Per the agreement that was put together for that bike path, technically, that bike path is responsibility of the school, based on the agreement they signed with the park district. But we said that maybe we can help them out with some solutions to that problem, and that's something that we're continuing just having a conversation on. We haven't done any work on it. We're just having conversations at this point before, as Tony says, we bring it to council to kind of give you a summary of where we're at and all the things that are going on over there. Does that clarify it for you?
The question regarding the crosswalk.
Yeah.
Across Caton Farm Road.
Yeah.
How does flooding of the path in the back affect the crosswalk project? I'm trying, we're trying to.
It does not.
It's like two different issues, right?
Yeah, there are two separate issues. This was just brought up when we met with them the first time. They said, hey, we have some issues back here. They, and it was their, they thought it was, we own the bike path, so we investigated, found out who owned it, figured out how it got, you know, was put into place. And then, then we talked about potential solutions, but we haven't gone any farther than that. So that's, they're two separate topics altogether.
I'm still convinced that the flooding got worse after the utilities did work back there as well.
And that could be true. I mean, I have no evidence of that, but it is a low area, and the path is, is very low. I mean, it's going to flood. I would have done things differently and build the path up and put pipes underneath it, but that's just not what was done at that time. I don't know the reasons why not. There might have been reasons at that time. There might have been reasons at that time that I haven't really got, really investigated, but there is some simple solutions that could be done to help solve that problem.
Is there any, um, update on the grant application for that crosswalk that?
Um, grant, that's not until late April or early May when they make the announcements.
Ron, I got another question, kind of piggybacking off of, uh, Claudia's question about McGilvery and Weber. Can we make sure that we, we don't forget and, and try to not somehow hold the township or somebody else responsible for helping with this project? I mean, the other side of the road is unincorporated, and I feel like there should be some type of cost sharing or something to help fund this, this project a little bit.
There's not gonna be a lot of work on the other side of the, of, of that intersection.
But they're gonna benefit greatly by having.
I understand that, and I can bring that, I can bring that up again to the county, but the county stance is, this is our project. But I, any help that I could get from council would be appreciated. We've had, we have asked. At this point, we are waiting to get what the cost of the project is and what the final design is, and then try, try to open up that discussion at, at that point.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Ron. Uh, moving on to our economic community development director, Patrick Ainsworth. Patrick?
No agenda items, but happy to answer any questions.
Any questions of economic development? All right, thanks, Pat. Uh, moving on to our police department, our police chief, Ed Clark. Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening, Mayor and council. I have one item on the agenda this evening. It's a request to, uh, place an order for four vehicles. We discussed this at the work session last week. Uh, the, the total, uh, estimated cost would be two sixty-four oh oh eight, but, uh, in talking with the mechanics, when they go through the equipment and see if we can reuse everything we can, it, it would be at the two hundred fifty thousand mark, hopefully. I will update you as this goes along, but alls I'm asking this evening is the permission to order this so we can get, uh, kind of ahead of schedule and to lag time of the vehicles.
So move.
So move, second. Third.
Motion by Alderman.
Albert.
Seconded by Alderman Person Overland. For the request to purchase four Ford Interceptor hybrid vehicles for D C E O grant reimbursement award. Questions or comments? Roll call.
Jennifer Methan?
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson?
Yes.
Claudia Gazal?
Yes.
Tina Oberlin?
Yes.
Mark Sapity?
Yes.
Nate Albert?
Yes.
And Scott Dyke?
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you.
Thank you. I, uh, also would like to thank the guy next to me for kind of turning us on to that as we were going along, so thank you, Ron.
Thank you, guys.
I appreciate that.
Good job, Ron.
Uh, the other thing is this Saturday, we got the polar plunge, uh, at noon, so I'm praying for a warm-up of some sort. I don't know if that's coming. I was down there in that area, it's at the Braidwood Rec, uh, Center, I was down there over the weekend, and there's still a little sheet of ice on there, so, uh, yeah, it should be fun, but, uh, I'm trying to psych up for it, but, uh, we got a pretty good team. We teamed up also with Westcom Dispatch, and, uh, I think we're gonna have probably fifteen to twenty plungers, so it should be a good event. So that's all I have this evening.
Just to tap on that, I did talk to, um, when we had the winter fest here, to, um, Officer Outlaw, and I did question, how come, like, there's no invitation to the council? And she said she does send emails, but I looked through my emails, it was nothing.
Well, if you, if you would like to join, you can get on the website and you can jump in on it, absolutely.
It would be nice, like, just to extend it next year.
Okay, will do.
I'll cheer from the side.
All right, thanks, Ed. Moving on to the mayor's report. I do not have any agenda items, however, I do want to congratulate, uh, all of our employees. The Joliet Herald News and Shaw Media had a survey again this year, and for the second year in a row, we were one of the top workplaces of Will and Grundy Counties. So I would, uh, extend my gratitude to all of our employees for their, uh, their work and for the way that they deal with our residents on a daily basis. And the other winners, Plainfield was the top, and then the other four that were included was Shanahan, Crest Hill, Lennox, and Joliet. So congratulations to all of them also. Um, I do not have anything else. If anybody has any questions?
I have one. At the event at, um, Carolyn this past week, you made a statement about you've been working with Silver Cross Hospital to bring a hospital here on some land, um, something I was not aware of. I asked everybody there, they weren't aware of it. I asked the council, uh, person that was on the Economic Development Committee, if she's aware of it, she wasn't aware of it. Um, I'm just a little puzzled as to, once again, if this is a true statement, why the council's not aware of this?
It is a true statement. As you know, Silver Cross Hospital is putting in an urgent care in the strip mall along Weber Road. When I was contacted in regards to that, and I passed it along to Ron Metzner and to Patrick at that point in time, I was speaking with one of the representatives of the Silver Cross Hospital, and I made him aware of the two hundred acres just north of the Speedway gas station, and I recommended to him that would be a nice possibility for an emergency center, something that is in Plainfield on one hundred and twenty-seventh Street. He was unaware that the land was available, and he said he was gonna pass it along to the people in the re- uh, real estate side of Silver Cross Hospital, and they were going to inquire about that property.
So basically, you just told them about it, they didn't say anything about actually doing it?
I spoke with the individual who called me.
I understand, but it sounds different tonight than it did the other night. It sounded like you were making plans with them to do this, and we were unaware of it. Now it's just a conversation you made with somebody, it's a little different.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, I agree. The way it was presented, it definitely seemed like it was further along in the process, and, um, to me, it was misleading, as if it's a real possibility that it's gonna happen versus just someone making a recommendation.
Okay.
That's election time, so.
I had a question for the mayor. Um, I've been hearing, um, seeing a lot of, um, communications from other municipalities around us, um, that their mayors are, um, scheduled to give a state of the village or state of the city or wh- whatever the case may be for, for the year, and also just to give some, uh, some guidance and some, uh, positive things to look forward to and that sort of thing as a, as an update to the city. Do we plan on doing anything like that for residents of Crest Hill?
When we had an active Chamber of Commerce in this city, there always was a state of the city. We have not had an active chamber in many years. When you look at the other municipalities, they are all hosted, prepared, and sponsored by their Chamber of Commerce. So we have not had one, I believe it's been probably two thousand fifteen, sixteen. Since then, we have not had one.
Do you not think one could take place without a chamber?
I think that, all I'm saying to you, Mark, is that all the other municipalities, the state of the city or the village is always under the auspices of the Chamber of Commerce.
I understand that, but my question remains is, could we not still do something?
Well, I guess we sure could. I don't know who would lead it.
But, I mean, you're, you're the mayor, don't you think that's an important thing?
Well, I don't see any of the other mayors leading it, as I'm saying, it's always done through the Chamber of Commerce. We do not have a Chamber of Commerce.
I just think it's, um, interesting that when, when things that are important, um, or we find things that are important, we find a way to do them, but when we, when we don't think they're important, we'll, we'll come up with an excuse.
Would you like to sponsor it? Put it together?
I don't think that's my job.
Okay.
If you don't want to do it, you don't want to do it.
Okay, moving on to our city clerk, Christine Burchet Hall. Chris?
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. I have a couple things on the agenda tonight, or the approval to waive the administrative penalties for the twenty twenty-five business license and alarm registration fees for the following businesses. Um, we want to take these separately?
Yeah, we want to take these separately. I mean, these could have been phrased as approval or denial, they could have just been, uh, consideration of, uh, so it can be a motion to approve each one. If it doesn't get a second, it dies on the vine, uh, or it can be whoever wants to make the motion can make a motion to disapprove it. It does not have to be a motion to approve based on last, uh, meeting's straw poll, so.
Even though you have to do it individually?
Yes, I, I think individually each one, because if somebody wants to make a different motion for one versus the other, I mean, I would recommend that you be consistent. I didn't hear anything last week that made one, uh, one argument in my mind different than any other, so, I mean, but that's why I recommend individually, because each one deserves to rise or fall on its own merits rather than as a group.
So your recommendation is to?
Each of the reasons were a little bit different for why they were late.
But your recommendation is to put it as no vote or a yes vote?
Well, somebody can make a motion to approve as written. It's, it, a motion to approve the waiver. If there's not a second, then it fails for lack of a, uh, a second, but if somebody wants to make a motion to disapprove, and that gets a second, then there can be a vote to disapprove.
Okay, first one is Del Toro transmission.
Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to disapprove.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion by Alderman Person Overland, seconded by Alderman Gazal, to not to approve the request of Del Toro transmission, which is the total waiver requested is one hundred and fifty dollars. Questions or comments? Roll call.
Darrell Jefferson?
Disapprove. Yes.
To deny it?
Yes.
Claudia Gazal?
Yes.
Tina Oberlin?
Yes.
Mark Sapity?
Yes.
Nate Albert?
Yes.
Scott Dyke?
Yes.
Jennifer Methan? Okay, motion carries to deny. Um, the second one is Adel Pediatrics.
Motion would be in order?
I'll make a motion to disapprove.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Gazal, seconded by Alderman Jefferson, to deny the request of a waiver of one hundred and fifty dollars for Adel Pediatrics. Questions or comments? Roll call.
Tina Oberlin?
Um, yes.
Mark Sapity?
Yes.
Nate Albert?
Yes.
Scott Dyke?
Yes.
Jennifer Methan? Darrell Jefferson?
Yes.
And Claudia Gazal?
Yes.
Motion carries to deny. The next one is Hendrickson Bumper.
Motion would be in order?
I'll make a motion to deny. Second.
Motion by Alderman Jefferson, seconded by Alderman Dyke, to deny the request of Hendrickson Bumper and Trim for the total waiver request of four hundred and fifty dollars. Questions or comments? Roll call.
Claudia Gazal?
Yes.
Tina Oberlin?
Yes.
Mark Sapity?
Yes.
Nate Albert?
Yes.
Scott Dyke?
Yes.
Jennifer Methan?
Abstain.
Darrell Jefferson?
Yes.
Motion carries to deny. And the fourth one is Trim and Prestige Brick Pavers and Landscapers.
This is you, right?
I have a question about this one before we do anything. Do you remember he was paying, did we clear that for him or not yet?
Um, I'm not sure whether it's one hundred percent investigated yet. Um, I did talk with Deputy Clerk Karen Kozurka. She indicated that she had a conversation with this gentleman when he applied for this each year that he applied for it, and as Patrick mentioned last week, our ordinance does say that two different locations are two different businesses. So my understanding was when he advised that he had equipment and like material, like brick pavers stored at this site, they charged him a separate business license because it is a separate location. It's the home business has the one license, the separate location for the storage of equipment and material was a separate license. That's what Karen said that she discussed with him, and that's why a second fee was charged.
So even though he's renting, he will still have to pay the business license? I just want to clarify that.
Right. I mean, it's a second location. It's not simply parking a vehicle, it's storing vehicles and equipment. That's what the ordinance says. Uh, I asked Karen whether, my, my understanding from Karen was one of our inspectors went out and checked to make sure that that was accurate, and, uh, I don't know that I've heard back from Karen or whether she was able to find out whether that was indeed what was inspected, but from my analysis right now, I believe that the two business licenses is, uh, accurate and should be assessed unless there's something that we have missed.
Correct me if I'm wrong, you said that they're also putting pavers there?
Well, his business is putting in brick pavers, so my understanding was, in addition to parking the truck, that there was other equipment and materials stored that, that was, was stored at this location. And I looked at the aerial view of this location, and it is not simply a parking lot where vehicles are parked. There are people that have all kinds of stuff, I'll just say. Looks like a lot of junk to me from the aerial, but I mean, it's, it's vehicles, it's So does that answer your question?
Yeah, thank you for clarifying it.
I, I got a question on that. Is this a shared space? You just mentioned a lot of other vehicles and stuff. I mean, is it a shared location?
My understanding is the owner rents individual areas. I don't, it, it doesn't look from the aerial like it's actually in clear demarcations such as like a parking lot where you could say, these three spots in a parking lot with, you know, stripes, those three spots are yours versus these three spots are somebody else's, so it's not like that. It's basically a big gravel lot, but you can see where there are individual clumps or groupings of stuff that I believe, as, uh, this gentleman testified to, or stated last, uh, last week, that there are other businesses in there that are, probably should be assessed a separate business license along with this gentleman if they are renting areas of space over there.
Has the city looked into that part of it?
Kind of, kind of looked like.
Is it, is the main, is the primary property owner paying a fee for, is he allowed a license?
That's one thing, that's one thing that I don't know yet, because, um, my understanding is, let's just take the Crest Hill Shopping Center, for instance. I mean, Abe Katz and his, I, I don't ever remember the name of the LLC or the corporation, but Abe, Abe's business is to rent space in that property to individual businesses. My understanding is we don't charge Abe a business license fee, even though that's his business, because we get a business license fee from every business within his, his, uh, his, his mall. So if this is a similar situation, I don't think that the owner, and I think, what did you say, Conti or, yeah, that if he's renting individual spots to individual businesses such as this gentleman, that we should be getting the business license fees from each individual business rather than him. But I don't know that we've run that quite to ground yet. I had this conversation with Karen, uh, Karen earlier in the week, and I think there's still some investigation going on, on the clerk's side. But certainly that does need to get fully investigated as to who else is over there renting space from Mr. Conti.
I don't know if I can make a decision on this one, because it's, uh, it's kind of confusing, but him being the only entity over there that's gonna pay a double license fee at this point, I, I, I think we need to continue to vet of it, and once it's clearly vetted, then we bring it back to the table.
Well, even if he's the only one being charged, it doesn't mean he shouldn't be, it means the other one should be. So that's the change that needs to be addressed, that, they need to inspect that and make sure that the other businesses are paying the required fees.
Right, but at this point, it'll be penalizing him for being there without the others being included.
Well, it's not really penalizing him, it's, it's just the other. Well, it's not really penalizing him, it's, it's just the other people aren't doing what they're supposed to. I make a motion not to approve this one.
Second.
A motion by Alder Person Overland, seconded by Alderman Albert, to deny the request of a waiver for Prestige Brick Pavers and Landscapers in the total waiver request of two hundred and twenty-five dollars. Questions or comments? Roll call.
Mark Sapity.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
Jennifer Methen.
Abstain.
Darrell Jefferson.
Abstain.
Claudia Gazal.
Abstain.
Tina Overland.
Yes.
Motion carries to deny, it's four to three. And that's all I have to report tonight.
Any questions of City Clerk?
Yes, any updates when the garage sale's gonna start? Do you have any dates yet?
No, no. We'll get that at the next meeting for you.
Okay, cause I'm being asked, okay, thank you.
I have a question about the, the topic we just voted on. Um, I assume there's still businesses that have not paid-
Correct.
For their business license?
Correct.
Are, so going forward, are we gonna potentially have to deal with more requests to waive these late fees? Are we, are we gonna be able to stop it here?
Well, until you have an ordinance and, or a resolution in place that the attorney was talking about last week.
Yes, Mark, if you recall, we discussed changing the ordinance to add that language. I've drafted that ordinance. Um, I just thought that rather than bringing it straight here, maybe you'd want to see it first. So I think Tony's got it for the next work session, so it'll get presented at the next work session. You guys can weigh in on it and either then pass it the next regular meeting as is, or you can make any changes that you want at the work session and then we'll get it on for a vote after that. But yes, that, that was the, the plan.
Thank you.
Uh, my question is concerning like, uh, the business where, uh, he has his equipment parked as well as the Hill Crest Mall owner. Um, I understand we charge individual businesses a business license fee, but we don't charge the owner of the place a business license fee for operating a business where you lease businesses to people. I, I'd like to get some type of explanation on that.
Good question.
Is his business technically located there? Is his LLC maybe located in Chicago or, I, I mean, I don't know.
The way I rationalize it is if you actually have your business running out of the strip mall that you own, then you should get charged a business license fee for that particular business as well as each other individual businesses. But if you don't run a business actually out of that location, it's just the owner of the property, then I don't see why you would, or get that business license. But that's not actually written in the code that way. I mean, uh, that's one of the things that, when you bring this back for a work session, if you want to, you know, revise the ordinance to make it clear that you want to charge that, then I think that that's your prerogative, but.
I think it's something we need to look into, cause it's not fair that the people gotta pay to rent, but the actual beneficiary is not getting, you know, charged for a license.
And that's-
Cause it's gotta have a name, right? Is there a name for that area?
I'm sorry?
Is there a name for that area that they have? Do we find out if it's registered on their name or LLC or?
Well, I think it's, it's owned by-
Conti Paving.
Is it Conti Paving?
Conti Paving.
So that's their corporate.
For the other business.
Now, they might, they might have their actual paving business in Crest Hill at a different location. They might have their paving business in a different municipality. I, 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 I don't really know them.
I mean, I, I'm, I'm just trying to, I'm trying to, I'm trying to visualize and understand the concept of you, you own this big business and you rent these spaces out and you're able to collect money and rent per square foot or however you charge it every month from the businesses you rent to, but me as the owner, I don't have to pay.
How is it different if I own a house and I rent you my house? I should pay a business license for renting your house?
But I'm still paying the property tax on the house, I'm paying something.
I mean, but again, this is for, th- this is the fair game for the discussion at the work session. I mean, if that's what the council wants to do, we can figure out a way to amend the ordinance, cause I don't think that's what you're doing now. I mean, I, I guess we can bring that back at the work session too. My ten thousand foot view understanding after talking with Karen was that we don't charge, like the Crest Hill Mall, the, the owner of that, a separate business license merely for the business of renting to other businesses. That's my understanding. I mean, Chris, can you tell me whether the Crest Hill Mall, whatever Abe Katz's corporation is, does he pay a business license fee?
I, I can't tell you right offhand, but I just looked up Conti Paving and they have a lock port address.
So they may just own the plot and then rent-
Right, rent it out.
Spots out.
It says Joe yet here.
Chris, those, that could be a lock port address, all of those businesses along Kane Farm Road.
Yeah, it's Weber, but it's, it's-
Right. It just means the mail comes out of Lockport.
It could be unincorporated area. It could be in an unincorporated area on Weber's.
If it's unincorporated, would we be able to charge a-
Nope, cause it's not a city.
Business license?
Not a city.
That's not our jurisdiction.
Correct.
So that's a, that's a question that we need to look at.
But I think you could, I mean, I'd have to look into it a little bit deeper, but I don't see any reason why you couldn't amend your business license ordinance to say that the business of renting qualifies as a business. If it meets that definition, then any business owner who rents all or a portion of its property to another business pays a fee.
I, I can chime in too.
Sure.
So different municipalities will have a different philosophy. Um, one community I worked for didn't even have business license, they just had occupancy permits. Um, it's the last city I worked for. If a municipal, excuse me, if a multifamily leasing office was on a property, they required a business license. So it really does depend on the ordinance at hand. Um, one thing I would advise, which would be, and again, uh, uh, maybe the city clerk can chime in, if a discussion were to be had here, we should chat about staff time and what that would look like. If there's things we have not done before, is this a Pandora's box? And again, I, we'll listen, we'll be guided, I think we'll have a good discussion on this one. If there are multiple businesses on one lot, it will take time to track down, take time to do a letter, take time to find the appropriate person, get them in for business license, get their business license registered, et cetera. So I just want to be mindful of that discussion once, once we have it from a CD, city attorney, clerk's office standpoint.
Sure. I mean, I, I'd just like to see what it looks like. I, um-
So I think we should open the, the work session item, not simply a revision of that ordinance, but discussion on, you know, a philosophy on business licenses along with it. I mean, I think that, let's open it up for a full discussion and then decide what you want to do.
And could we possibly have some sort of research on our surrounding municipalities and how they deal with it?
Absolutely, I think that's, should be easy to do.
What they do, so that we're not going blindly into?
I think for next week, that might be, we're, we're looking at how we can manage that one. Tony, do you think we can look at it in?
I, I think we got a couple of questions we gotta do a little more research on, see if we can deal and make a decision. We'll try our best to try to have something, I would say for the, I mean, the March twenty-fourth work session, in that way we'll have enough information. Cause I'm looking this up too and a little more investigative work to find out.
I can, I can do some quick research to see if the IML has any resources. They might have some model, model ordinances or papers on it, so I can just do some quick searchings of that and if I can find stuff, uh, I will, uh, give it to Tony to put in the packet.
Okay.
Mike, you, I just thought about it, you asked, you said something about if I rented your house, do we charge a business license for a multi-owner type situation?
I know we have our rental registration, so there's obviously inspection fees that go along with residential, real estate and rental.
Okay, thank you.
Let it include like all those apartment buildings in, in our work.
It's one of a lot of homes too.
Well, I know.
A lot of homes.
I know.
Anything else, Chris?
No.
Okay, moving on to our city treasurer's report. Treasurer Glenn Conklin, good evening, Glenn.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This evening I seek your approval on our list of bills issued through February twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-five in the amount of one hundred and fifty thousand, one hundred and seventy-two dollars and twenty-two cents.
So moved as presented.
Second.
We have a motion by Alder Person Overland, seconded by Alder Woman Methen for the approval of the list of bills. Questions or comments? Roll call.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
Jennifer Methen.
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Tina Overland.
Yes.
And Mark Sapity.
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you.
Last item is just to report our regular overtime payroll from February tenth, two thousand twenty-five through the twenty-third of February, two thousand twenty-five was in the amount of two hundred and sixty-six thousand, one hundred and ninety-three dollars and eleven cents. That's all I have for this evening.
Questions of City Treasurer? I have a question for the director there. Have we ever found out if we got that reimbursement for the guardrail yet?
I'm sorry, I missed that. I will, I'll look it up and get that to you tomorrow.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question for the two Glens. Um, seems like by this time of year, we would already be having discussions for budget for the following year. I know we had work sessions dedicated to budget, cause there's a lot going, a lot to go into it and a lot to, a lot of considerations. I was just wondering where we're at, where we're at on that.
Yes, I'm currently working on the budget. I, I have a, working on my draft here and I'll be working with, uh, Tony, Phil, uh, sorry, the city administrator on that, to wrap that up this week to try and get it, uh, to Glenn so we can look at it and hopefully present to the village by, if not Monday, the following week. Sorry?
Or the city.
Or the city, both, yes. I wanna, I wanna follow my chain of command here, so just make sure everything goes and everybody's on board with this, so.
Are, are we gonna have a, a work session or a special work session to discuss it? That's typically what we do.
Yes, that probably will, yes. Probably a special work session.
I'm just, you know, timeline wise, what were you thinking of? Cause it's fast tracked.
I know, it's getting late, yeah, that's the thing. I got into the budget process late and, uh, so I'm working as diligently as I can to get this done in a quick, you know, in an efficient manner. But yes, hopefully I can wrap it up this week and then, uh, get something to Tony and Glenn and make sure everything's okay with this and then we can present something to a work session or a special work session, um, to get your guys' input on this, of course.
Okay, thanks, Glenn. Uh, unfinished business? We have, uh, nothing, anyone? New business? Committee liaison reports? Anybody? City council comments? Positive city council comments? Anything you'd like to share with your constituents, beginning with Alderman Dyke?
Uh, nothing at this time, Mayor.
Alder Woman Methen?
Nothing at this time.
Alderman Jefferson?
Nothing at this time.
Alder Woman Gazal?
I just want to promote this one business that opened a couple, couple months ago in, um, in Crest half of Weber Road, Blessing Cooks. It's a near gra, um, Nigerian actually cuisine. If, uh, if you guys can, please go and support that business, um, they're, they're having a little struggle with that. And the other thing is, I would like to remind all the residents, um, of Crest, especially Ward Two, that, um, next Thursday, March thirteenth, is really important that you attend these meetings. There's two important agenda items. One is the garden range and the other one is the old city home. So for those that, um, they're not happy and they're complaining, this is your opportunity to come out and express how you feel. Thank you, Mayor.
Alder Person Overland?
Um, once again, I just want to say, I did speak, speak again to Mr. Lawrence George at our Crest Hill Family Outreach Food Pantry that's, um, in dire need of some support right now due to the fact that they haven't been able to fundraise and they're just having a real tough time right now. So if anybody has the ability to, to donate a little bit to them, you can go to their website, um, or you can send a check, the information's all there and it would be greatly appreciated because there are a lot of people, um, who just can't afford to feed their families and this is a very tough time of the year. So he does some wonderful work over there. Um, I'd appreciate anybody who could help him out.
Alderman Sapity?
Uh, nothing tonight.
Alderman Albert?
Uh, yeah, Mayor, I got a couple of things. Um, first off, I just, I was at a funeral last, uh, Wednesday at St. Ambrose and as I was leaving, right down the street, there was a water main break and the guys were out there. And I got out of my car and I was dressed like this and hoping not to get too dirty. Um, but it was, Eric, Eric Bouchon was leading the crew and I, I just gotta really give him a hats off. They, they were struggling with trying to get to the water main that was leaking and it was directly underneath the storm sewer. And I was watching them for a few minutes while they were hand digging and had tobacco and everything else on there. It was just a really impressive job, you know, watching them do that, being careful not to disturb anything else. So, um, all the guys that were out there, they had, you know, a job to do and it was, it, it was just a really impressive, uh, operation. So, you know, my naivety maybe, been, uh, on the city council for twelve years and didn't realize that, you know, the moment that they turn off the water, that's when we have to do a boil order. But if they keep that pressure down, it's still coming out of the pipes and they have to repair it live. Um, just watching them do that while this water's pouring out and granted, that was a warm day, so hats off to them on those cold days, but they really do a, a good job. So thanks to the, the guys and gals in the public works department. And, uh, number two, last Wednesday was the, uh, it was a Thursday, was the dare graduation at, at Richland and my, my son Dean won second place with the, uh, the dare poster, so really proud of him. But I really wanted to make sure that Officer Outlaw realizes how much those kids appreciate her coming to the school and the work that she does with those kids. It, it, it is just so impressive. So hats off to Heidi and Officer Outlaw and, and the city, city council for continuing the dare program in our schools. It's a great, a great asset in our schools, so.
So Nate, you didn't take your coat off and help them?
I tried, they didn't, they wouldn't let me. It was a, it was a union thing, so.
Insurance yourself. Okay, public comment? Anyone like to address city council? Please step to the podium, state your name for the record, addresses optional.
I'm in as Raul Salazar with Prestige Brick Pavers and Landscapers. Listen to your conversation and some questions have been raised. Uh, I do have some answers for the questions. I don't know if you're permitted to answer, yeah, just for the fact, give us some info. You know, Conti, he runs business from the place, you know, he, he has a paving company working there. He has piles of gravel and all that kind of stuff and he is the owner. So he do runs business from that place, not only for, uh, asphalt paving, paving, but also for renting. He is renting us the spaces and, and it's more than just a few. I mean, I can count five right away, you know? And, uh, everybody else, I don't know if they are paying, it's not my business, but if they do, I believe they're, they're only gonna be charging for running business from that place or their house because they only receive the mail from, you know, to their house. That's my case. I don't receive letters and stuff from my, my home address. And that's my one, are the licenses that I paid and also paying the other place. So if, I just feel like you, you, last week, you said you're gonna be investigating the case in order to make the decision, you know, individual. And I don't feel like you investigate well enough, Conti, if they're running business from their place somewhere else, Lockport, no, they, 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 uh, the address is here in Weber, where they are registered for. But they're running business from the place, the site and I don't know if you're gonna But they're running business from the place, the site, and I don't know if you're going to charge them for having their business registered on Weber Street. I just want to say that. I don't know if that makes any difference, you know, but I don't see how you guys investigate the whole case with Conti businesses in order to take the decision if you're going to charge me the late fee and two licenses.
Mr. Conti has been there for many, many years. And he's rented out to a lot of different businesses, a lot of landscapers and everything else for many, many years. This is the first time it's ever come up. So that's why there needs to be some research done from our city attorney and we'll get to the bottom of it.
Yeah, another thing, you know, I don't sell bricks or gravel or anything. I just have my trucks there, just there's some bricks sitting on, you know, because that's leftovers, you know. I do a job, got a few sections of brick and I store it there so I can, you know, next time you serve for another job. But I, I don't sell, there's people not coming into my rental area and trying to buy anything.
Okay.
Question.
Thank you for your comments.
Can I just make a quick question for you, Mr. Steph? I just, while he was talking, something came to my head. If was, if this is business, it's unincorporated or in Joliet or whatever, why are we charging somebody that is renting and unincorporated? Doesn't make sense to me. That's why I put abstain. I mean, it's just, think about it. It's like me, you have a business and what are you at? Your office is in Joliet, but I'm going to charge you fee for Crest Hill business because your office is Joliet. It's the same thing. You're renting from your firm.
The Conti property is not in Crest Hill?
Well, a couple of people said, it says here, Joliet.
I don't trust anything that, if it's just a mailing address on a website, I, I think you need to look.
It's clear that the property, the property that he's parking his vehicles are in the city of Crest Hill. It's the mailing address for the business that's on an unincorporated Weber Road. That could be the case with any property owner.
Yeah, I, I would check the, I, I would want to check the GIS to make sure that the property PIN, that, that, that PIN number is within our jurisdiction versus somewhere else, not just what the supervisor of assessment said is the owner. Because a lot of times, the owners could be out of state even, but it could be, I, I know for a fact that there's a Lockport business that has a Joliet, a Joliet, property in Joliet, but their mailing address is out of Lockport. Actually, I think John Russ. I think John Russ's mailing address is Lockport?
I think it is. All of those businesses along Caton Farm Road and on Runway, the fire department, Prairie Bluff are all in the city of Crest Hill with a Lockport mailing address.
But yeah, I would, I would definitely think that we need to make sure that this PIN is in the city, but my understanding is that it is. But I think that you're right, we should verify that. Because obviously, we couldn't be charging somebody a business license if they're in a different jurisdiction.
Thanks.
That, that, that's what I looked up. I looked it up last week when we talked about it, I looked it up again today on the GIS local website. The property that is in, is in conversation is in the city of Crest Hill, that pays city taxes. The mailing address is in unincorporated Weber Road. But that's true with a lot of John Russ's properties as well. There's a property, you know, the mailing address. But I, I want to just clarify something that, that you said, sir, is that our agenda item was to vote on waiving the late fee. This is not voting on investigating who should be getting rental charges. That's the community development director, which I know he's still going to work on in the coming weeks with the clerk's office. And if we see that something was done in error, we'll get it corrected and refund if it's necessary. But we're not waiving the late fee. That's what was, we voted on tonight for clarification.
But, but didn't we vote to late fee him on two addresses?
All we, all we can do is what's presented to us. If the clerk's office says that there should be two, two business licenses, that's what we, that's all we have to vote on. If the research needs to be done in that side of, with staff, on whether or not they need to pay those two licenses, and then we can revisit it. But that vote was just to waive the late fee.
It, it would seem to me, if I have a business, which I do, and I chose to rent out some extra storage space, it's not another business. It's not another business.
Yep.
It can be. Could be quite a lucrative business.
How so, Mark?
Storage is expensive. If you have a business of.
I'm saying I have a.
Not a storage business, but you're using part of the property that you have a non-storage business on for storage for other businesses. It's basically like a second business on the same property as your primary business.
I'm not selling anything out of a stor- storage space. I'm storing paper and material at a rental unit.
Christmas decorations.
Right. It's not another business. It's not being retail, there's not a cash register, it's just stuff stored someplace else that I'm paying rent on. Stu? Yeah?
Couple of things. First off, you were questioning about Crest Hill, Lockport, blah, blah, blah. LVS, right over here, is Lockport. Just to clarify.
Most of the businesses on Caton Farm Road are.
Well, mailing address, though, Stuart. It's just, it's the mailing address.
They say they're Lockport.
But I mean, it's.
Do they pay Crest Hill taxes?
Yes.
Do they pay sales tax to Crest Hill?
That I don't know. Crest Hill, I mean, a lot of these properties are, you know, annexed into the city of Crest Hill, but they still are grandfathered into that Lockport mailing address.
I'm just saying, where do they pay, where do they pay the retail sales tax to? Because there's a lot of it there. A question, a clarification, I guess, is more for us. The, the statement about rental spaces need to pay a business license hypothetically. If I go to one of these official rental storage places that have the garage doors and I store extra equipment, scaffolding, extra wire, extra connectors, extra pieces of equipment, because I do that for my business in several different cities around the country, I'm, I'm sorry, around the, around the state. Because my crew may go to one of those lockers that are closest to wherever they're working to drop off overstock, pick up extra stock. Am I supposed to pay a business license?
Are you using that address as a business?
No.
Okay. I don't know.
My business is in these places. It was going to be in Crest Hill.
I, I think that there's a lot, a lot of things that need to be researched as far as that goes. But what we voted on tonight were.
No, no, I know what you voted on.
And, and that's a whole separate animal. If they find out something else that changes things, we'll deal with it. But the point is, we were voting on fee waivers.
I'm not, I'm not questioning what you were voting on. The statement was made that if a, if a, if a business is using a storage facility to store equipment in, they're supposed to pay a business license there. That was the statement that was made.
Yep.
Right? So hypothetically, if I was using a storage locker, storing wire and connectors, extra equipment, scaffolding, things that we use for our jobs, because we're doing a large project, like I said, am I supposed to pay a business license there?
Well.
Based on your sky, based on the statement there, was that?
I think when he filled out his application, he did it with two things. One is his home and the other is his business. I, I can't tell you if things weren't done properly from the get-go, I don't know. That's what needs to be researched. But you don't go and fill out a thing that says your business address is where you're storing things, do you?
No.
No.
That's not my statement, that's not my question.
Well, there, that's the difference between what you're proposing and when it was done.
No, what the statement was, was that if somebody is storing equipment in a storage facility, they have to have a business license.
Well, there, there would be a lot of those, because there's a lot of storage in Crest Hill.
That, that's, that's, I guess that's the question.
I understand what you're saying. And, and whether that was done properly or not properly from the get-go, I don't know, but we need to figure that part out.
Okay.
Tonight, we were just voting on.
No, no.
Totally different animal.
My question wasn't about that, it was a question of something we started on.
And I understand what you're saying and I agree with what you're saying, but this is a little different in one respect because he, he filled out a business license with that as his address. Maybe, I don't know what should have been done or shouldn't have been done. That needs to be researched.
Okay.
And that's the difference between your scenario and what we have here.
Okay. My next is, is another clarification statement. Mayor, you said that you spoke to Silver Cross Hospital about the two hundred acres north of the Speedway. I'm assuming you're talking about the two hundred acres that are owned by Department of Corrections? Mm-hmm. Has that been surplus yet? Has that even put on anything to be surplus? I'm trying. I didn't hear the rocks.
Do we want it tax exempt, not, not for profit there? Is that what we're encouraging?
That wasn't the question.
It's been going back and forth for many years, Stu.
But you're telling, but, but you're telling the hospital.
But that's why they needed to, that's why they were asked to investigate it.
But you, you, you asked them to look at something that's not even available? That the city has been trying to get available for years?
It could be available. And maybe if somebody came along and spoke with Department of Corrections, maybe things would move a little bit quicker.
Shouldn't that have been done years ago? Many, many years ago.
Years ago, it was supposed to come to us.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. April first. Anybody else? All right. Mike, is there a need for an executive session?
My understanding is there was going to be a motion made for an executive session.
Yes, I'll make a motion to go into executive session for personnel to C one.
Second.
And if we're going into executive session for two C one, I would recommend that we also go in for two C eleven litigation. Since we're going to be in executive session anyway, we can kill two birds with one stone.
Okay.
But that's up to you to make the motion. That's just my, my recommendation.
That's what you want, you're the attorney. Do I need to make another motion?
Yes, second. Second's both.
So you can make the motion for two C one and two C eleven, if you will.
So I'll change my, to two C one and two C eleven.
Second.
Do you have a second?
We have a motion by Alder Woman Gazal, seconded by Alderman Sapity for an executive session for two C one and two C eleven. Questions or comments? Roll call.
Scott Dyke?
Yes.
Jennifer Methfin?
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson?
Yes.
Claudia Gazal?
Yes.
Tina Overland?
Yes.
Mark Sapity?
Yes.
Nate Albert?
Yes.
All right, we'll be going into executive session at eight eighteen PM.
Thank you.